No worries.
Six o'clock, call the order. Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council, June sixth, twenty twenty-two, roll call.
Uh, Scaries?
Here.
Joseph Jones absent. Libby?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Arms?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in.
Budgeting.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic of America.
One nation, under God, in its full.
Thank you. Here will be agenda motion. So move.
Whoops, sorry. Thanks. Who was it? Oh, Libby.
Um, Chris.
Been awhile.
Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Joe, uh, Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Item three, presentation of life-saving awards, Public Safety Director, Plasky.
So we've got a nice crowd tonight. And for good reason. That's right. Uh, the Windsor Heights Police Department, Windsor Heights Fire Department are proud to announce life-saving award presentation for several team members in connection to an incident which per New Year's Day, January one, twenty. On January one, twenty twenty-two, New Year's Day, approximately seven oh eight P M. West Cal University Communications Call Taker, Dina Larson. Dina. If you'd like to come up. Answered nine one one call generated from an address in Windsor Heights. The caller was the victim's daughter, Holly. Holly. Would you like to come up? He might not want to. Would you come up? Uh, Holly reported that her mother may have experienced a heart attack earlier in the day. Her mother was now gasping for air and was not awake. Dina told Holly paramedics had been dispatched and Dina remained calm and collected as she walked through further instructions with Holly. Holly continued to relay her mother's condition of breathing to Dina as first responders were in route. Dina gave Holly clear and specific instructions on starting call cardio pulmonary resuscitation or CPR, resulting in CPR being initiated before responders arrived. Paramedic firefighter Nicola and E M T firefighter Evans. Along with Officer Miller and Officer Klingon. From the Windsor Heights Fire Department, Windsor Heights Police Department were on duty and dispatched the call. While en route, dispatch gave an update stating that the family thinks the patient may have had a heart attack earlier in the day, and the patient was now having trouble breathing. West Cal was asked to add an engine for additional manpower. Clyde Fire Department Engine three twenty responded to assist, including Lieutenant Garrett Forman. Who also works for the Windsor Heights Fire Department. Paramedic, uh, firefighter Pat Thomas, who cannot be with us tonight, and paramedic firefighter Nicole Pontier. Is that all right? Working on it. As fire and EMS teams were arriving on scene, they were told it sounded like the victim was having what's called agonal respirations. Officer Klingon and Officer Miller attached an automatic external, uh, defibrillator or an A D, and the A D stated that a shock was advised. A pulse check was done by the fire and EMS personnel and found no pulse was present. An A D shock was given with no return of a pulse. CPR was started with our Lucas device and our official breaths were given. Further life-saving measures were continued and a pulse was ultimately regained with the patient breathing on her own before leaving the scene. It was found that the patient had indeed suffered from a heart attack. The patient was transported to the hospital for further care, made a full recovery, and was related, was later released from the hospital and is doing well, as I understand. And is with us tonight. So welcome. Thank you for coming. The city of Windsor Heights, the Windsor Heights Police Department, Windsor Heights Fire Department would like to recognize the efforts of Holly in getting, uh, CPR started early and working through a very stressful and traumatic incident involving her mother. We would also like to recognize West Cal call taker, Dina Larson, for her professional calm and collective handling of this call. Dina received a life-saving award through West Cal, um, so that that presentation is already here for. To our partners with the Clyde Fire Department, Lieutenant Garrett Forman, paramedic firefighter Pat Thomas, and paramedic firefighter Nicole Pontier. Thank you for assisting. Uh, on this call and being an integral part of these test block. As most of you know that are around here, we can't do our job without our partners. So, um, and that even was seen this morning in an instruction. Finally, thank you and congratulations to Officer Klingon, Officer Miller, paramedic firefighter Nicola, and E M T firefighter Evans for their professional, efficient, and effective response, resulting in saving the life of another. There are a few things as reporting, as knowing you had a hand in extending someone's life, giving them more time with their family together. Well done, Dean. Well done. This is Officer Klingon's second life-saving award. So congratulations. Thanks, sir. Well done. Thank you. People also have flowers.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, so I'll try to keep it together, but, um. What you guys don't know is that my husband was out of town at the Iowa Bowl game, ProHawks. And, um, at the time I had a month and a half old and an almost two-year-old. And so my mom was there to help me. And so when. I didn't have anybody, these were the people came into my home and helped me at a time that was really scary for me. Um. And I remember, I remember you holding my baby. I remember you telling me that everything was going to be okay, but I did the best I could and. I, I relived that moment every time I see my mom. So, thank you guys for your professional involvement and for shoveling my driveway. All of it. So, you guys serve me.
Appreciate all of you. Y'all might have seen the article that I sent to the city Facebook page as I threats. Uh, the only thing that. I guess didn't happen is I guess my wife didn't buy a lottery ticket. We live in a town of three hundred people. No way if they had their boots on could have got there and gotten a defibrillator. My wife has passed this period. Then it would have been waiting on a helicopter. And Tom being the essence. I don't think it would have turned out the way it did. And I want you all to know how special it is that people like that, that's Johnny on the spot, you know. Uh, it's a luxury. And I appreciate all of it.
Thank you for making the drive back out. So I always appreciate being able to follow up with it. So, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
What's that? I have no idea. And just like that, we're done. But I just said, I don't know.
I should have warned you. I apologize. Any problems?
What's that? Amazing.
Uh, I would have to look. I can let you know. Did that work, Lauren?
That's amazing.
Somewhere around the St. Louis area.
Missouri plates in the human.
Yeah.
She's amazing.
We do what we can. It's not me, it's them. Say that all the time.
That's amazing.
Thanks. I got it. Didn't need it, but thanks.
All right. Item four, a public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two oh four and ordinance amending chapter one oh five dot oh two of the code ordinances related to solid waste control and recital definition motion.
Second.
Uh, Chad.
Yeah, we have to leave a moment.
So this, uh, actually the entirety of. Yeah, the entirety of the public hearings are all related to the open brain, uh, discussions and having at the public safety committee meeting level, um, for some time. As here, probably maybe for longer. But in trying to. Tighten that up so we don't have a vague definition such as a chimney that it's not fine. I don't know if there's somebody that makes something and call that a chimney. So. Uh, the first part of this was in regards to the, uh, solid waste part as to where. Adding the definition of landscape waste and a definition of structure to chapter one oh five point oh two of the code. And again, it's just tightening up our efficiency so that there's not room for question or room for argument. It will go on and force an action. Um, and then. Be getting a little bit here. Under twenty-two oh four. So twenty-two oh five is a substantial change, uh, that has to do with the open brain code. And when I started previous coding to see there's about a paragraph in me and it's now. Six paragraphs. And again, it's designed to make sure that we outline what is legal, but it's not legal within the city so that there's not. Question that there are. And then the final piece to add is the section that has to do with, uh, businesses posting. That, uh, the items they sell may not be. And specifically use that language of may not is because of course people come in Walmart, don't necessarily live in the heights. And so, uh, you know, it's, it's incumbent upon them to make sure that what they're using is. And some of those items will be in cities and they would not. So, uh, we elected the preventative vision as may. Uh, this is something that went through the public safety committee, um, with, uh, Ms. Campbell and, uh, Mr. Jones on the. Act committee, staff committee supported. Exchange. Entire.
So, uh, so if it would be up to Walmart, like, are we going to send them information once this passes that says that we have to, that this has to be posted per our ordinance? Um, i- is that something like how, how closely do we monitor this? Because I can see kids gripping it down or, you know, if it's just in one area, it's. And then we like.
We will communicate, um, with Walmart's S M's I V, the requirements, but as you stated, uh, I mean, practical application of ensuring that stays there all the time is almost impossible. So I will, will post that information. Ultimately, the people that buy it are the ones who are responsible, uh, you know, the store selling it, noted fireworks. People buy are responsible for, where they can't, can't fire those, uh, but we'll, we'll communicate the changes to the, the, the differences and of course the changes in code will communicate through, uh, social media and website channels. For clarification, um, that questions related to the twenty-two oh six.
Correct.
Parables of them coming up here and talking about all of them. Did we get any, um, public?
None.
All right, um. Motion to close public hearing.
Scaries?
Yes.
Uh, Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Item four B, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two oh four.
Second.
Further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Four C, public hearing on number, ordinance number twenty-two oh five and ordinance amending chapter one oh five oh five of the code ordinances relating to burning. Motion. Second. Other comment? Hearing none. Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
I gotta help. I gotta help myself.
Public hearing. All right. Move. Anyone move to close?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I forgot to write down the times. Oh, I'm bad at this. Six nineteen. Sorry. I'm good. Sorry.
All right. Make sure.
Sorry.
Or the consideration of the first reading ordinance number twenty-two oh five.
Second. You guys are making to make the minutes just so easy. Motion second. Motion second.
Discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two oh six and ordinance amending chapter three oh seven dot two dot two of the code ordinances related to businesses assault fire hits. Jimenez, Sky Lanterns, and other outdoor recreational devices. Motion.
To approve color open territory.
Second.
Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Public comment? Question? Question. Is a Sky Lantern, is that one of those things you light up when the lights are? Very dangerous.
Thank you, Campbell. I'm sure you've seen the movie.
Question, answer. Yes, thank you, Mark. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion to close.
Second.
Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yeah.
Or F, consideration of the first reading in ordinance number twenty-two oh six motion.
Second. Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
By public forums is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comment to no more than five minutes. Any other comment?
None. There's nothing on here.
All right, uh, item six, consent agenda. Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
New business seven A, consideration of resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-one, a resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-two year end balance transfers for the city of Windsor Heights, Iowa. Motion.
Second.
Uh, Rochelle or Dennis?
Uh, these, the first one is just, um, the actual resolutions that are normal for the end of the year. And so these are things that we would have decided in the budget for fiscal year twenty-two. And so these will just be normal. Most of them are to pay the principal interest bond fees. Um, some of them are moving local option sales tax to the equipment revolving fund, the community center, the library, the insurance, and then road use tax to seventy-third street projects. So these are all, we're budgeted, um, in fiscal year twenty-two.
Hearing none. Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Seven B, consideration of resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-two for resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-two balance transfer for the city of Windsor Heights, Iowa. Motion. Second. Rochelle.
Uh, these are actual balance transfers from project funds. So these project funds, um, have been sitting with balances on them. And then, um, this passed after budget was over. I was able to get, dig into these. Projects to be sure that they were all complete. And once they were complete, then I could actually close them out. So this is actually cleanup. Um, so what we're doing is there's a ton of money sitting in twenty fourteen A. It actually belonged to the twenty eighteen project. So it's. It's, it was kind of, it was all messy. This is bringing all these projects to zero balances and closing them out. So we'll have a really nice looking balance sheet and a lot of money in the, um, future projects fund. That's from projects that we didn't need it for.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, I can get this too.
I really appreciate you outlining. I looked at this earlier. This is clear, concise. So appreciating that kind of work.
Sure.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
It'd be as well. Um, Rochelle, I thought this is a, it's a really important piece of work we did, uh, making sure that we're in compliance and also making sure that the funds are now available. So it's a big deal. Thank you.
And I know the auditor will be thrilled too because he didn't like those. I'll clean up now.
Chad, real quick, Rochelle, why is the police pension fund? Did we talk about that?
Uh, we actually had one person that was a, a dependent of a police officer that was on our pension fund. It was an old, old pension fund. That person has passed away. So this pension fund is completely done. So we don't, we won't have anyone else on that pension fund. Um, anytime in the future. So, um, we, that money was actually transferred last year, and so I didn't even need any of it. So just transferring it back to where it came from.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing number?
Uh, scaries?
Yes.
Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Uh, A reports. I have. To report the, uh, communications committee meeting this Wednesday, also on Wednesday, the Mid Iowa Association of Local Governments will meet at Clyde's Public Safety Center. I've been back by the chat. He is going to be kind enough to enjoy me. Join me. Join me. I have other stuff, but. Hold on. All right, Ms. Arms.
Um. Yes, we had, uh, Perks. Uh, Laura joined me, uh, for that, uh, with Dalton and, uh, several residents and the whole family crew. And, uh, I just thought it went really well. Unfortunately, I have a hard stop, uh, but I know they kept meeting and we just, um, are working on our next schedule, which we'll do a tour. But, um, I really appreciated, um, the. Uh, work that's been done to this point and outlining kind of what our goals are and, and setting agenda next time we'll be doing a kind of a tour and looking at the, um. Facilities and, and the pools and all those sorts of things. So I think I'm really excited. I think we have a good group brought together to help us, um, or Mike was on that too. Um, uh, communications committee on Wednesday, the whole game, the mayor will join us and, uh. I think like.
Oh, I got.
Back is next week and so is the, uh, the trails project. So, uh, those, those meetings are happening as well. So that's what I got.
So I've got Jesus comments about the parks. I'm really excited to talk about the future of our park and, um, how about their whole remaining Dalton for their, um, for ahead of time and planning and, um. The notes that they were capturing, um, I thought it was a great meeting and very excited about that. Um, I'll let Susan talk about these in the parking special events. Um, I'm going in for Joseph X Marv Dart meeting and I really got a guy in Rob, you didn't find that, but. Not seen in all his calendars. Must get my work calendar. So.
Thank you. Uh, I did another coffee with council on Saturday and a couple of people stopped by. Everything was good. One of the interesting things that happened was a young man in early forties. He works for a fintech. And he's based here in Windsor Heights, but he works remotely for a national company. And he had no idea, surprisingly, that Aldi was coming to, uh, Windsor Heights. Even though, you know, we talked about it a lot. So I thought that was interesting from a communication standpoint. Um, my first movies in the park was the other day. I've never been able to go before usually because on Friday evenings and Friday at sundown starts by Sabbath. And so it was really quite remarkable to see and the people that helped pay for that. I think it's, it's wonderful. Thank you, Teresa. I understand that you're a part of that as well. And, um, there's a fellow by the name, I believe his name was Alonso. He's a truck driver for Swift. And he parked his vehicle, big rig over there at the Walmart after making delivery and saw the crowd and walked over. And as I was leaving, he grabs me and he says, this is amazing. I'm from Oklahoma. And a small town and I've never seen anything like this in all my travels anywhere. And he says, congratulations. And I said, Alonso, um, there's room in Windsor Heights for you as well. So. And, um. Uh, the, the visioning exercise that we all went through, um, this past Thursday, I thought was really good for an hour and forty minutes. I look forward to the next time. Thank you. We all found it very enlightening.
Well, how do I follow that up? Um, we had a good turnout for the movie on Friday. Uh, my head count, Nina, I had to take off shoes. Uh, I mean, it was there. It was about a hundred and eighty-five people. So we just keep gaining. Um, so we, we ran out of cookies, pizza, and popcorn. So, uh, the next special events committee meeting, we'll have to discuss, uh, increasing our items and kind of how we, we go from there. Um, I had ordered a hundred and fifty cookies, which is why I knew that we had over a hundred and fifty because I was very stingy. You had to be there in person to get a cookie because I knew that they were flying, um, off the. I, I was tempted to. I did have a. I I was tempted to. I did have a little girl ask me if I would go and bake some more for her and I said, well, unfortunately, I don't bake. So I leaned. Yeah, I I the cookies were a hit. So I was amazed that we went through all the popcorn that we did and um it was it was a lot of fun. So a big thank you to the all who volunteered um on Friday night and also to the public work staff members, Brian and Jason, who were there to uh make sure all ran smoothly. And thanks to Chad for helping to tear down everything and being there with me till the end. I failed to recognize the students from Cole School who came through around Earth Day to clean up garbage from the blocks surrounding the school. Uh they did a great job cleaning up and it was great to see their enthusiasm. So thank you again to the Cole students. Um they actually picked up twigs from my front yard. So I was very happy. I brought the dogs in so they could stop barking so that they would continue to clean up my yard. But they had a lot of full garbage uh containers and they were very happy to to go through and I, it was a beautiful day too. So um I saw there were probably over seventy-five kids that were walking around. So hats off to the the volunteers uh and the teachers that kind of made that that happen. And then Metro Waste Monthly Meeting is June fifteenth. Then we have a special events committee meeting on June seventeenth. The, don't forget the foundation's ice ice cream social is on June twenty-sixth. And then they're still looking for hosts for the ice cream social. So you can contact Mark with the foundation if you want to be a host for this event. And then their concert series starts on June twenty-eighth. Um so make sure you go down and enjoy the food trucks and the bands.
Is there a list somewhere? Because I had seen the post, but I didn't know like where there are, where they need hosts because they're trying to do it so by street, right?
Right.
Is there like a a list of where, who, of what streets need hosts?
And and I know that they're also doing it down at Colby Park as well this year, trying to, you know, bring the people that don't have anybody on their street that volunteered to to kind of bring it down there to maybe have more people attend. So Jason Roberts from Hy-Vee is the one that's heading up the down there at Colby Park. So of course. Um then I was approached at the movie on Friday by the young resident who wrote counsel about chickens and increasing the number of chickens allowed. I introduced her to Dennis. Because I was not, I I remember the the um the text that we received, but I couldn't remember past that, which really isn't a surprise since the movies kind of took over my my brain for a bit there. So um we talked about looking further into this chicken residency idea. And maybe this is something that we can um talk with Bolton and make, they can look into this as we update our ordinances to see if the number should stay at two or to be increased. Um so she was very happy to hear that we hadn't tabled that or just completely forgotten about that. We just had been working on budget um stuff at that time. So it was kind of put on the, we'll do to-do list for later. Um and then great job to the fire department staff as well as our nearby departments who came to assist at the fire, uh the house fire today. Yes, last night and today, the departments were able to knock down a potential fire not only once but twice in less than twelve hours. Then after having the life-saving award ceremony tonight, I just want to say how proud I am of not only our fire and police departments, but also of our nearby police and fire departments who are always willing to help us out. This type of teamwork is what saves lives and keeps our residents safe. So thank you to the police and fire.
Thank you, Sue.
Hey, Mike, can I add this? I wanted to, I forgot to mention this, Susan, jog my memory, but um Clyde Elementary had their school rock, summer's rocks program. And so I was going to say thanks to um the places there for coming out and being part of that community event. And we had a huge turnout for that and um which was great. But at that event, I had um five different sets of parents come and talk to me about police presence at the school. And with the um uh situations that have been happening around the country, obviously there's more awareness and and concern about uh safety at schools and for our kids and those sorts of things. And so um I said that I would um be willing to help facilitate a conversation, you know, whether it's between our the the school uh districts because we have two and or, you know, the um Chad and his team to figure out whether or not, I know that when Kale was in school there, now it's been a hot minute, but um that we used to have a regular presence or there used to be a regular presence um in the school building. And so whether or not that's an inspiration moving forward, but you know, maybe then off to the public safety committee and and uh figure out if there's some, an opportunity for that with our um community outreach team on board.
Yeah, so we used to teach a program called four one one in the schools, which is similar to there, but um isn't quite as um strict on the the curriculum. And uh last year, I believe it was, the schools did not allocate time for that. So um the the officers are in there um fires and you guys were just down there reading and eating lunch with them a month ago. Um PD was was with them, but as far as the actual teaching of that class, uh they took our they didn't allocate time to it. So unfortunately.
I think it was like for their sixth grade. I don't remember, but I'm sure you guys have all the information.
We do. Yeah, the program's still there.
So that's why I said I I told the parents I knew that there used to be something, but so we'll see. And I told the parents that they needed to engage, you know, particularly with the school district and and make that request. Um so I'll help kind of facilitate. I got a couple of follow-up emails from that and all. Engage or continue that conversation.
Anything, bro? Joseph is in Belfast. I believe it's six hours ahead. So it's twelve thirty-seven. I assume he is fast asleep. Um but we miss him apparently. Uh Dennis, anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right, uh motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Scaries, yes. Libby?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arms?
Yep.
Six thirty-seven.